All this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hall to order. Apologies for being late, we had a special session upstairs. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Committee members Barnes.
Here.
Bowersocks.
Here.
Shinnaweth. Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Chair Smythe.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Any staff report? Seeing none, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting would be in order.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes as written?
Aye.
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 Opposed, minutes are approved. For public input, I have two. Jim Duffett, 903 South Anderson. At the time of the agenda, okay, I'm sorry, we'll get there, and the other one, okay. Both of these are at the time of the agenda, and both related to sewers, okay. I'd like to make two comments, if any council members want to speak. Okay, this weekend I received a number of complaints about a party on campus that spilled over to the neighborhood. Windows were rattling more than half a mile away, and when people started complaining, police department told them there was a permit issued. Permit language isn't real clear about how the noise ordinance can be or can't be violated. There is an exception in the noise ordinance for fireworks and parades. So, I'm going to ask that staff take a look at this and bring it back to committee in three weeks from now with any changes that might be needed in the permit process to set an upper limit on any noise from parties of this sort, and any other related permit issue items. I got about twenty complaints, I've got a long list of comments which I'll put together and forward to council members when they quit coming in. So, but it's been, I know that the police chief is already looking into it, and I appreciate his efforts. So, for those who have complained, we will get you an answer sometime, hopefully by the next committee meeting. And on another note, I wanted to comment on, this year there were a number of sidewalks and street ramp repairs and sort of related items in my neighborhood, and I just wanted to let the Public Works Department know that I thought the job was done. I watched the crews, because I bicycle by them all the time, they did an incredible job, the work is really neat, it's very clean, they were very fast, very efficient, my compliments to the crew, I'm glad we're doing this in-house. So, okay, yes, Brenner?
If I could add quickly during public input, another announcement, last night was the first night of a two-week film festival for Community Planning Month, the month of October, and if there's any popcorn left in council chambers, I apologize, it's all my fault, I'll come clean it up, but we turned this place into a movie theater last night at six o'clock, and we'll do again the same thing this coming Sunday, the 28th, at 6:00 PM. The two films we'll show this coming week are a film called Eden's Lost and Found, which is about Chicago and about how neighborhood groups have mobilized from the grassroots in Chicago to improve their neighborhoods, and then a second film, I forget the title, which is about a movie theater, a drive-in movie theater in Boulder, Colorado, that was turned into a sustainable neighborhood with the goal of zero carbon emissions. So, those are two great movies, they're each a little under an hour long, and we'll start at six o'clock again this Sunday, the 28th, and everyone's invited, there will be more free popcorn for the taking.
We would like to know, though, by then, how to turn off all the lights in here, which we could not figure out last night. Okay, next up is ordinance number 2007-10-120, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, repealing section 7-11, special use requirements for outdoor advertising signs, and amending Article 9 of the Comprehensive Sign Regulations and amending Article 10, the nonconformities, Plan Case Number 2050-T07, sent from the 10-15-07 council meeting. Heather.
I would move that we send this to the next committee meeting, which I believe is the second Monday?
It'll be Tuesday, because it'll be Tuesday, the day after Veterans Day.
Okay.
Second. It's been moved by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Robert Lewis, to keep this in committee. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a motion carries, we'll see this in three weeks then. Yeah, three weeks. There is no meeting next Monday. Next up is ordinance number 2007-10-121, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Illinois Street North Side, east of Cottage Grove Avenue. Bill Gray.
Thank you, this was a recent Traffic Commission item to address parking near the intersection of Illinois and Cottage Grove, and safety concerns exhibited here, and the recommendation, per the report, is to prohibit parking on that north side of Illinois, 105 feet from the center line, east.
Dennis.
Well, I don't have a discussion, I would just make a motion that we approve this and send it to council.
Second.
It's been moved by Dennis and seconded by Lynn to send this to council, I assume that was with a recommendation for approval?
Yes.
With a recommendation for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, that goes to council. And next up is ordinance number 2007-10-122, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 2393 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at certain intersections, Newport Drive at Skyline Drive. Bill?
This is an example of two fairly new subdivisions, one actually pretty brand-new subdivisions, and they're connecting at Newport Drive and T intersection with Skyline, appropriate to have the local street stop at the Collector Street, so that's the recommendation by the Commission.
Dennis?
I would move that we send the ordinance number 2007-10-122-
123, isn't it? Oh, 122, you're right.
122, to City Council with recommendation of approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Dennis and Lynn respectively to send this to council with a recommendation for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, goes to council. Next up, number eight, is ordinance number 2007-10-123, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between Champaign County, Illinois, City of Urbana, Illinois, and the Urbana Park District relating to development and management in the watersheds, which include parts of East Urbana, the county's east campus, and the park district's Weaver and Prairie Parks. Bill?
Thank you. This agreement is kind of a culmination of over three years of efforts by a variety of governing bodies for the Weaver Park or the Scottswood area stormwater improvements. The actual construction work is almost completed, and restoration, final touches are all that's left, but for the most part, it's been a great project for all the governing bodies involved and for the citizens that live in and around the area, and particularly for Weaver Park. Park District did allow for this detention area, wetland area, to be within part of their 60 acres that they purchased several years ago, and the understanding that we had a few years ago in initial discussions was that there would be certain responsibilities for the storm sewers and such that were in this park, and this memo and the agreement pretty much outlined what those responsibilities are. The city is in the storm sewer business, we know how to clean them, televise and repair them, et cetera. The responsibilities for the sewers into the basin and out of it, as depicted on the exhibit, are appropriately city responsibilities, as the one smaller sewer takes care of drainage off Main Street, and the large outlet storm sewer helps protect not only the park area but the area to the east, and is an outlet that ties into the Saint Joe Drainage Tile and also helps drain Washington Street. There is a, so those are city responsibilities. There's another large diameter storm sewer that collects water from the county complex, in particular the nursing home and the nursing home, and rather than the county have a large detention basin taking up space by the nursing home, it was all carefully coordinated into this one basin here, so that's going to be a county responsibility. But anyway, the agreement goes into a fair amount of detail as to responsibilities, I'm comfortable with the city's responsibilities, I don't think it's a big burden for us, and in fact, the fact that we receive CDEP money, Saint Joe is spreading assessment for people to pay, I think the city has gained a lot by this improvement, it's really helped what otherwise without it may someday be a city responsibility if and when this area is annexed. So, the fact that it's done now is a big relief for stormwater issues, flooding problems that occur in the Scottswood area, and also to provide a great amenity to Weaver Park. I mean, it's, the master plan is really something, not only the ball fields and such, but with the Grove, and this will be an interpretive area, wetland plants and stuff, and so it's going to be quite a park when they get more grant money and build it out, and it'll certainly be a definition of a sustainable park with what they have planned in the future.
Discussion. See, we need a motion to pass to council. Brendan?
I'd move that we send this item to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Brendan, seconded by Lynn, to send this to council. Any other discussion? Mayor?
I would just like to say what a good example of intergovernmental cooperation this has been, and it really helped the homeowners around there as well.
Thanks, Bill, for another great agreement.
Echo that, it has been just a wonderful experience with all us getting to the table and meeting many times, and this is such a great project, we're going to try to get some recognition via some oars through different associations, because I think it really makes it quite a statement.
Just so people know, that when I first came to town, I actually did some research at the north end of this, of what is now Weaver Park, there's an old buffalo wallow at the north end, right, sort of right across from where Smith Road hits Main Street there, and we used to sample that for that creature that I was studying back then, in 1979. So, it's great that it's going to be kept in a fairly, it's going to be kept the way it really ought to be kept, not developed.
Dennis?
One other factor that came into play in the consideration of the drainage plan for this area, which resulted in the detention basin in the park becoming a useful amenity rather than a detriment or a problem, was that the city did help residents within the city limits to ammunerate some of the assessments that were incurred by city residents, so that they would at least be on a even playing field with non-city residents, and I think that shows fair planning, useful consideration of the financial burden that some residents will partially bear, but the result would be something that the city will be able to enjoy, and the residents of Urbana will be able to enjoy for a really long time.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, okay, this goes to council. Bill, you're on a roll. Next item is illegal sewer connection policy discussion. Do you want to discuss nine and 10 together, or are they really separate? They're separate, okay. Okay, seeing that, I've got, do you want to give staff a report, and then I've got two people who want to speak from the public.
Okay, illegal sewer connection policy discussion. What brought this up is a recent illegal connection that was uncovered not too long ago on Anderson Street, south of Washington, and the extraordinary expense involved, and surprise for a homeowner that has been using their facilities forever, or any homeowner, and then suddenly find out through inspections, televising, investigation, that there was a sanitary or waste line connected to a storm sewer, which is a violation of our ordinance, violation of EPA Act, et cetera, so worked with the property owner and tried to work through that correction, and disconnect and connect to the proper sewer. These sorts of instances occur fairly infrequently, however, with the diligence of our sewer crews in televising and cleaning lines, and also just troubleshooting when we see, I'll use the word gray water in storm sewers, we try to find the source, and many times we do find illegal connection. More often, it may be a broken-down sanitary sewer that maybe is leaching out or leaking out into a storm, or somehow there's a cross connection, but unfortunately, there are homes that are connected like this. So, at the urging of resident for consideration, our current policy is, and a sewer lateral, whether it be storm or sanitary, is the responsibility of a homeowner, 100 percent, from the public sewer to the building. So, what we did is, I asked Brad and Gail, in fact, if you want to come up here, in case there's questions here, but Gail, Assistant City Engineer, Brad Bennett is our civil engineer, did a lot of the research here, and we looked into what maybe other communities may be doing or may not be doing, and tried to summarize that into this report, but for the most part, they're fairly infrequent, but if they do occur, they can be very costly, especially when the sanitary end or storm sewer are under a roadway situation, and that's when you really get into some extraordinary costs. There's extra effort and care in those sorts of repairs, it's more labor-intensive to remove the pavement, dig down, trench shore, what have you, whatever the depth might be, and then in the backfilling of the hole, it's not just throw dirt in and walk away, there's a process where you do careful compacting or use a low-strength cement-type material, which is costly, and then the street patch itself is costly, so those add up into some pretty significant costs. So, what we thought and provide you is some information in our research, one alternative is, is that actually American Water has a program in some communities, technically it's not in Urbana for sewers, but it is for water lines, and that's their linesaver program that they have, and there's a cost to it, of course, if residents would so be interested, but the city could partner with the water company and push for such an insurance-type policy. What those exact costs are, we don't know, but for the water linesaver, it's $9 a month, I think, is the cost, so it's 108 dollars a year, and it's a fair amount of money, actually. But that's one alternative, there's a deductible included with that linesaver program. Another option is, and this is something akin to what City of Champaign currently does, is that perhaps cost share in the expense to help, not that the city would be paying 100 percent of that cost, but at least those extraordinary expenses that would occur for that homeowner, and our thought is to consider something of a cost share, not to exceed a dollar amount, in this case, we felt that $4,000 would be a pretty fair number, which would be not to exceed $4,000 amounts. So, like I say, there aren't a lot going on, I think Brad's informed me that we have another one imminent now that needs to be disconnected, so they maybe average one or two a year, I think we've seen, had three in a year, some years we have none, so from a budgetary standpoint, we would probably look to budget around $8,000 a year, and I think we would reevaluate it every year in subsequent budgets, that if that number's too low or too high or what have you, we can adjust accordingly, but just to start out, we would just offer a budget of like $8,000 a year to carry and address those probably infrequent-type repairs.
If you take a look at the alternatives that we've actually offered, one is the partial reimbursement, and the other is no action alternatively, the policy as it is. The insurance option is there, but it's not quite clear whether it would cover these illegal connections, which are in violation of an ordinance, so we didn't actually offer that alternative under here, but it is available if we can determine whether or not it would cover that particular instance. So, the two alternatives are partial reimbursement of the $4,000 on those illegal connections to correct that hook and get the San Jose sewer.
Okay, Brendan, then Dennis.
Okay, so I'll just do questions now, because we have public input, too, but there's a few quick questions I had. One is about the number of these cases, I think if I understood the memo right, there were three of these cases in the last four years, but when you talked about budgeting for how to budget for this going forward, you were expecting two a year. Is that because there's an increased rate of us finding these, because we're doing more sewer inspections, or how many of these can we reasonably expect?
Well, I know this year, this fiscal year, we have two right now, and we're actually going through another round of televising storm sewers, we had been the last seven years or so unsanitary, so we had a little bit of a hiatus on the storm side, so being there, we're going to be focusing again on storm sewers, in likelihood, in the next five or so years, when we go through the entire town again, we could be finding, you know, maybe more than two a year, we just don't know.
Okay. Regarding the cost, I know you said 4,000, would the $4,000 be our share, the split, so that if the project costs were 8,000, we would, in alternative one, give 4,000?
Yes.
And I've heard some numbers about the cost, at least in one of these cases recently, being estimates coming in at 13,000, and really big numbers, is 8,000 enough? Do you think that's an outlier, the 13,000 dollar number, or what, based on the cases we've had in the past few years, is the expected cost?
I'll go ahead and field that question. You know, the cost is really dependent upon the location of it, and kind of another critical aspect of that is the elevations of the pipe. If the elevations of the pipe work out, you might be, and the storm and sanitary sewer lie in close proximity of each other, you'd be looking at very small paths, essentially hooking it from one pipe to the other. If the elevations, you know, don't work out, where it comes in under what the, or below where the sanitary sewer is, you'll essentially have to chase the pipe, dig the pipe back up towards the resident's house until you get it at an elevation where you can actually bring it, you know, down into the sanitary, and that can add to the cost, and that's probably where you're looking at your 13,000, where you're having to cut the entire street and up into a good portion of the resident's yard. And it's kind of one of the challenging aspects about these, because a lot of times you don't know what the elevations are until you dig it up. Unfortunately, there's no manholes on these where you can pop it open like there is in our public system and see, measure down, you know, with the tape measure, and see what the depth of it is. A lot of times, unfortunately, until they have it dug up, we don't really have a good idea if they're going to be coming in below the sanitary or above the sanitary.
Okay, my last question is, did you consider anything like an alternative three here, where the city would pay for a share of the public sidewalk and roadway pavement repairs, but the homeowner would pay for the portion of the fixes that are on the private side of the right-of-way line? Is that something that you've considered, and a split that is a possibility? Is that feasible, and is it easy to account that way?
We didn't consider that option. I think if it's still, if the work is, in this case, done within the city street area, I mean, that's, I think even if it's included behind the curb or what have you, those costs, for the most part, are going to be part of that 50 percent, not to exceed $4,000 cost. So, I don't know that we're much different than what we're proposing here versus what you're suggesting.
Dennis, then the mayor.
I looked, I mean, when American Water offered the linesaver program, I did inquire about it, and this is using, you know, you brought it up as a model for, you know, to establish an insurance program, which would seem somewhat perhaps difficult to administer. One of the things that was true about that program was, that wasn't useful, is that if you're a landlord, if you have, if your property's rental and not residential, they don't offer it to you, and that's kind of a detriment probably to like, you know, a third of the people who live in the city. This is probably not a useful way to go. I think it is, you know, a good recommendation to try to assist homeowners in correcting faulty connections, which very likely were done way before they even moved into town, you know, these are rather old historic. Are you finding, I guess because you're only finding two or three such instances, are these unusual experiences, or because the city construction practices back in the very early times was less regulated, and there were fewer parameters, I guess, or, you know, codes concerning how things might be done, are you finding that, do you expect to find a lot of these in the really old neighborhoods, or is that not panning out?
I don't believe that'll pan out, I think it's a very limited number of homes that this will affect.
Do you think that these are caused by ineptitude on identifying what's the line that's for a sewer service, and what's the line for a storm service, or is this just the vagaries of construction?
It's hard to know, I mean, obviously with the current plumbing codes, you know, we have multiple checks and balances to keep this from happening or occurring on new construction, but, you know, Mr. Duffett's home, who is one of them that was affected, I mean, his house was built back in 1920, so it's hard to know, I mean, it could be an honest construction mistake where someone, you know, you have two pipes in the street, and unfortunately, they just picked the wrong one back then, like I said, they didn't necessarily have plumbing inspection to the standards that we have today. I mean, you know, sometimes it was constructibility, there might not have been a sanitary sewer available to the residents, or they had a basement, and the elevations worked out where they couldn't gravity flow into the sanitary, it was too shallow, but there was a convenient storm that was deeper, the storm sewer located nearby, and it was, at the time, easier for them to tie into that. I mean, prior to the 70s, there wasn't a lot of consideration given to where your sanitary sewage went, I mean, you know, combined sewers and stuff were common then before, and people didn't worry about it as much as they did today.
Mayor, then Robert, then Lynn.
When I read the thing from Illinois American Water on the insurance, it struck me as a very profitable thing for them. Maybe if we pushed it, they wouldn't ask for a 60 percent rate increase, but, you know, there's a guy that became very rich in Chicago by insuring people for getting, losing a limb on the trolley system, and this is really the same kind of thing.
I think Mr. Bowersocks brought up an interesting problem, in that since this is older construction, and you have to comply with local plumbing codes today, when you go into a system, the elevation issues, that's going to be prevalent, no matter, I mean, the age of these homes, that's going to be a prevalent problem in most cases, don't you agree, or not?
I agree, and what we've done is we've worked with the individual homeowners in order to come up with a solution that'll get them into the sanitary sewer. You know, we have a couple of options, there's pump systems, sometimes, you know, we could come up with creative, you know, solutions to be able to get them in there, and we'll work with them, go out and shoot elevations, and work with their contractor to make sure that we get it fixed appropriately.
I think one of the things is, we've televised a significant portion, if not almost all of our storm sewers, and we haven't been finding a lot of these instances. Just recently, with a little bit better training and looking for the evidence of these, we're finding a few, but I would not expect the instance to get any larger than what we found over the last three or four years, because we're not, you know, it's about that same pace as what we approximated here in our memo, a couple a year.
Lynn?
I like alternative one, where the city's participating in part of this, and it seems to make sense, and I know we're not voting on this tonight or moving it forward, but you want to do the?
I had one, I realized I had one other question before we do public input or enter into discussion. The question was, I think when there was some staff conversations about this earlier, there was maybe some discussion of retroactivity, if we put this sort of alternative in place, do we apply this to some of these people who have the construction work, you know, underway now or just finished in the last few months? That wasn't in the memo at all, what are your thoughts on retroactivity of this benefit?
We didn't really, that's more of a council policy decision than a recommendation. We didn't really, that's more of a council policy decision than a recommendation we would make. We looked at it from this day forward and made a recommendation.
It's a little bit of a, could be problematic unless you just make it very specific of everything after a certain, you know, August 1st, 2007, whatever, because you could have people that have left, moved, someone else absorbed the cost, they hear about it, validation, a variety of things to verify can be problematic. I know with the current situation on Anderson Street, they certainly inquired about it, and we told them what the current policy is, which you know. And if the council wanted to consider that, that would be a council decision. But I think to go much beyond in years, I think it'd be tough on us in tracking people down and verifying and that sort of thing, you know.
Heather?
I read in here where there's, where you could just cut off the lines or something like that. Is there, if the city shares up to, in the cost and up to $4,000, would there be some, something in here where we could maybe put a timeline for the property owners before we just cut it off and say, you know, there's a lot of people in the city who live paycheck to paycheck. And if, you know, $4,000 is a lot of money to some people. And to come up with that, you know, in a certain amount of time can be problematic when you're on a certain budget and raising kids. And I just wonder if we could put a timeline to, if we're going to share on the cost, also put a timeline in there that says to the property owners, we're sympathetic to the fact that this is a big hit at one time and we're not going to cut your, cut it off. And is there a policy or a wording that we could put into place to help the homeowners besides just going up to the $4,000?
It's a little bit problematic in looking at a timeframe because we're bound by the Environmental Protection Act to remedy these illegal discharges. And so when you start giving time out there, we're in essence violating the Environmental Protection Act and our MS4 permit, which asks for us to remove these illegal connections. You can work with the homeowners, but we're somewhat limited in how far out we could extend any time.
Does the EPA give you a timeframe? Do you have to have it done by such and such time, or is it immediate cutoff?
If you contacted IEP, they would tell you to immediately remove the illegal connection. In fact, our instructions when we find sanitary sewer leaking the storm is that it has to be fixed immediately, even if it involves working overtime on weekends or after hours.
Okay.
They have, tend to have zero tolerance.
Okay. We have two people who want to speak to this. Can it hold till we hear from them? Okay. Jim Duffett and then Diane Pittman. Jim Duffett's at 903 South Anderson.
Good evening. I have a statement that I wanted to read, and then I'll, I've got a copy to pass it along. I really appreciate the city council for taking up this issue and looking at different options. I'm writing you today, well, this is a letter, regarding the situation that we have at our home, which we live at 903 South Anderson, and in response to a letter that we received on August 2nd from William Gray, the director of Public Works regarding this situation. First, we do want to thank our alderman, Brandon Bowersack, for his help throughout this ordeal and that we've been going through. I'm not only submitting our thoughts on what we feel may be some ideas of the city's future policy should be as it pertains to sewer repairs that homeowners are required to make, but also our situation that we hope and feel that the city's responsible for. First, we are requesting that the city of Urbana reimburses for $6,080. That's what cost us, plus another $250 to get our sewer repairs done at 903 South Anderson. I want to talk a little bit about some background and a lot of variables. I mean, there's a lot of variables that are involved in here, as you'll see. I mean, but first, before I even get into it, I do want to state the professionalism that we received and experienced from the Urbana Public Works, not only from Brad Bennett and Norm Reinhold, but the whole staff. And Mr. Gray, I just wanted to really stress that. Brad, I really appreciated all the help and the times that we've called that the city came out and helped us. And even though we weren't able to quite solve the situation, but still, it was very appreciative. Last fall, Brad notified us that our facilities were not connected to the sewer system and that instead we were connected to the storm drainage system. Our home was built in 1921, and I purchased the home in September of 2001. Needless to say, I was not aware of the situation. We immediately started to pursue some bids, which we did get a bid of $13,500 as potentially could be a problem. And I guess we were happy for the $6,300 final resolution on it. And we discussed the situation with Brandon and other people and what options that we might have. Through some additional resource and information, we found out during the time that our yard was being dug up, that we believed that there were several oversights that occurred, which if properly inspected and connected, we would not have been faced with this situation. And again, you know, there's a lot of different variables here. First, you know, initially we were told that we were not connected to the sewer line under the street. In fact, after the street was dug up, we did show that we were connected to the sewer system and the line was not being used. In 1993, the city records showed that an outside plumbing firm, which unfortunately is now bankrupt and owned by somebody else in town, had done some work and that this work was inspected and approved by the city inspector. We felt that there were three issues that were involved in 1993. And I don't know what the ordinance was back in 1993, but new PVC pipe was connected to our sewer line coming from out of our home, and the original line that is still connected today to the sewer line was disconnected, and the new PVC pipe was connected from that original sewer line. Next to our house, if this was our house, our sewer line went directly this way into the street. And right here is a clean-out drain. And right there, the plumbing firm went into it, broke out the old pipe, and then connected new PVC pipe to it. And if you followed the new PVC pipe out through our yard, and feel free to go by our yard just to see how much of it is dug up, and you would have noticed at one point, we were about five and a half feet deep. And the connection to the sewer line is seven and a half feet. At that one point, at five and a half feet, the PVC pipe took at least a seven to 10-foot dive all the way down deep. This is all new pipe. And I say this because this is important because, again, the sewer line is seven and a half feet, and we were told that the storm drain, we were connected at 12 and a half feet. And I would have, we would have thought that, and the city did end up approving this work, I guess the questions that we had were two major issues. Number one, why was the new connection from the house that was disconnected from the older line ever questioned? The second was, the seven-foot slope would have immediately concluded that there was no way that this new pipe would have been able to go uphill and connect into our storm, into the correct sewer system. If by chance that this was not the time that this error occurred, there were still several other opportunities that we felt the city had to make the needed corrections with the homeowner. For example, you know, in 1920, you know, again, it's a long time ago, the city installed the first sewer line. At that time, our home should have been connected to the sewer system, but it was not. The contractor of the city made a mistake. A storm sewer 10 inches was also installed prior to 1923. Both appeared to be dated on a September 23rd map. You know, again, here too was a mistake that instead where we connected to the storm drain versus the sewer line. Also, a 10-inch storm sewer was replaced in 1959 with an 80-foot inch storm sewer. At that time, the contractor and the city should have been aware that we were connected to the wrong system, and action should have been taken as all of Anderson had been ripped up. While we were told that the contract with the contractor stated just to hook up everyone who was already hooked up to the older system, this could have been another opportunity to remedy the problem. Unfortunately, we can't turn back the clock, but if the proper work and oversight were done, as described above, we would not be in this situation. We also understand that there are many new policies today that were not in place in the past, but we still feel that there was no excuse for some of these mistakes to have occurred. Because of these issues, we do believe the city should be responsible for these costs and to at least help reseed the parkway and a portion of our yard, which is already being dug up and being not yet reseeded. Second, I just want to talk briefly about some suggested ideas. And I think some of the ideas you've thrown on the table are interesting, too. The city of Urbana should pursue policy changes as it pertains to this issue. First, the city, I would argue, needs to invest in technology similar to what was used through a private firm that we had to purchase. We feel that this technology would not only be economically sound for the city, but also save the city time and resources, and would also save the taxpayers of Urbana, the homeowners, a lot of grief and potentially unnecessary financial hardship. A full assessment of the situation could possibly have been done to make sure that maybe this could have been done for $200, not $200, probably $500 versus $6,300. Second, where costs are incurred by the homeowner and homeowners who do have responsibility for these costs, is there some type of financing option that could be available? Different times when there's new sewer lines put in, I'm not sure what the financing mechanism that the city uses, but, you know, you spread out those costs over five or 10 years. And is that something that a homeowner, you know, whether the cost is $2,000, as you mentioned, you know, people living check by check, week by week on it, if somehow some of these costs could be spread over for homeowners, whether it's three years or five years or 10 years? Plus, if it can be shown where the city is responsible for wrong inspections or other problems, we would hope the city would end up picking up those costs. Lastly, in terms of the letter, and I don't have it in front of me, but I do appreciate, Mr. Gray, you making a comment too about the letter that you did send us, that if the city does make a change of policy, we surely hope it, our situation is considered, that it does go back because the work was not done till in September. With that, I want to thank you very much for your time, and I'll just give these things to...
Brendan?
Yeah, Jim, I had a follow-up question if you'd entertain one. I know one of the aspects of this is that the cost can really be unequal. If the pipe's on your side of the street, or it might cost a small amount, but then the person across the street might cost a huge amount because they have to pay to dig up a lot of the city street.
Correct.
Whereas another neighbor might have to dig up a lesser amount. In your situation, how much of the cost you paid was because of the amount of the city street, the sidewalk that you had to dig up and then replace? And how much of a variable did that throw into the wrench when you were trying to get affordable estimates?
Well, just the city, the street work, just for the city, just to dig up our earth or Hefner Plumbing to dig up the street was almost $3,000. And then the rest, the $3,000, was in our yard. And again, you know, I'm not sure what the technology that is all out there, but I think we were all astonished when the street was dug up and we all looked down and there we were. We were all connected. And what had happened was the disconnect happened about two feet away from our house where the, what's that, the drain?
Cleanout.
Cleanout. God, I can never remember that. Where the cleanout is, that's where the disconnection ended up happening. And, you know, again, hindsight is 20/20, but at the same time, none of the digging that needed to be done in our yard would have happened. But...
Jim, you refer to technology. I know we use a camera system and such. What technology is different that you're suggesting?
Well, you know, I guess two different things. I mean, one of the, and I can't recall, and Brad, you probably can recall, the company that came out, but they were able to run not only a camera through our pipe, but they had another machine up on top of the ground that we were able to know exactly within maybe this part of a distance where our pipe was because, you know, these guys were digging over here, then they stopped and dug over here. And again, you know, the city did a very helpful, they came out several times, ran their camera through, but didn't have that technology. And the other thing, at least what I was told, was that I don't believe the existing camera that they have that could go through the sewer line. If it could have turned into our sewer tap and turned again, then they would have realized that we were connected to the sewer line, and that camera could have ran all the way up, the whole way, and would have, you know, we could have measured it and found out that, jeez, you know, we're, got some problem, you know, three feet away from our house. I assume that technology, at least the technology measuring above the ground, definitely exists. I'm not sure if the technology, which I was told by one of the contractors, does exist, that you can get a different type of camera that can move on 45-degree angles.
Other questions for Jim? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Diane Pittman of 1102 Eastern Drive in Urbana.
Thank you. I really don't have a lot prepared to say. I'm the second resident who has been found this year with illegal sewer hookup. We have obtained an estimate of $6,200 to have this repaired. We were notified by the city a couple of months ago that it was illegally hooked up. And we do have an estimate, and it will create a financial hardship for my husband and I. We have three children. And a $6,200 repair job on a sewer connection will be about two months' salary for us. And it's definitely a financial hardship, and I just hope the city can help us out. Our house was built probably 55 years ago, and we've been there 12 years. And now all of a sudden, we find out this is illegally hooked up, and our responsibility, our financial responsibility to repair.
Do we have any history on this house? Is there anything similar to the other case, Jim's case, or is this really a 50-year-old problem?
Well, this is one where the sanitary and the storm sewer literally run side by side down the middle of the street. So, you know, on all these cases, it's impossible to speculate how they got hooked up, but essentially, their service actually crosses over the sanitary and into the storm, I believe. I mean, they're literally running side by side down the street. So, I mean, speculating, it could be possible, like I said, whoever installed the sewer at the time just picked the wrong type pipe to dump their service into.
And in this case, they've got, the major cost then is digging up the street?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Are there any other questions for Ms. Pittman? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Well, I'm hoping that the city will choose to assist the homeowners in some manner. We may not decide exactly what portion or whatever. There's a couple of things that come to my mind. One, I personally have a house on a corner, and I think that my sewer line runs at an angle from my home to the center of the intersection. So I know that I'd have a very long connection, much different than a person who's mid-block and only has to go to the front of their house. So, you know, there would be different conditions very likely for people on corner lots because of, well, I don't know, I'm not sure how all the sewers connect on all the streets, but, I mean, my observation is a corner lot may have a lot more issues to it than a street lot. So there might, you know, there might be that consideration to take into effect. The other one is, there are, what is the possibility, and this might be one that community development might be able to answer. There, in the city, there are certainly neighborhoods where the TIF districts, not TIF districts, but the target districts, because the census target districts in North Urbana, East Urbana, and some of central East Urbana are targeted areas that receive assistance through grant money for rather various services. And one of the programs the city does have is emergency loan assistance. I wonder if it's possible to broaden the emergency loan operation... And one of the programs the city does have is emergency loan assistance. I wonder if it's possible to broaden the emergency loan operation of the city Community Development Office to include homes which are suddenly faced with emergency sewer line connection problems that may or may not be in the designated target areas for assistance? Because one way that the city could help would be to provide no-interest emergency loan money to people who, because, you know, well, for a variety of reasons, can't pull together the $6,000 because they don't have savings, or they have family obligations or whatever, to help meet whatever costs haven't been covered by the city, even if we do choose to subsidize it partly. So that's a discussion, a suggestion that I'd like to make.
Bill.
We would have to explore that with the Community Development Department, although I do know, in the next item we're going to talk about, when there's been sewer lateral repair is necessary, and residents have asked for assistance of some kind, that I believe, and this would be in John Schneider's area of responsibility, if it's a low income or low to moderate income, I don't recall the details, but I know that there can be some assistance in those specific examples. But I, we would have to research and get back to you with the details.
Right. My memory is that the assistance is specifically for...
Oh, for the Community Development grant areas.
Right, right. It's for them.
Right. That's correct. It'd be only for certain parts of the city.
And it's usually for structural improvements on a home, you know, or in a...
We could research those details, but I believe there may have been a case or two in the past if the property owner met those income guidelines.
But what I'm suggesting is I think that we need to have somehow the program broadened because the two individuals who just come up tonight are not in those target areas as far as my reference, to my memory of the maps. So they would not be able to apply for that money because of that. So what I'm wondering is, can the city come up with emergency funding suggestions for low-interest loans?
Well, I think the answer to that is, the emergency funding is the sewer benefit tax, is what we're suggesting right now. Now, if council wants to look at some other tax or whatever, that's fine, but that's the mechanism that, you know, funds sewer-related repairs in the city.
Heather.
I have a question, and that is, to city code, when an inspection is done on a home, when someone buys a home, are sewer lines and the connectivity, is that part of an inspection?
Typically, no.
Yes.
It is?
For...
City policy is that it's supposed to be, and you said typically, no, so...
Why are you talking about at a point of sale as part of the homeowner inspection on a transfer of the property?
Right.
No. The homeowner can request it, but typically around here, they do not do it as part of the sale. There's no inspection of the lateral line typically.
Only for a new home is there an inspection of that connection, or for a brand-new-built home.
And that's because it's inspected by the plumbing department. But if you have an existing home and you're selling it to another owner, you could request it as the buyer that they have done it. I know some people that have done that, but generally, most people do not include that as part of the home inspection, as part of the sale of an existing home.
What would we like to do?
Well, I guess I'm comfortable with option one, with the city doing what sounds like is basically a 50/50 cost share up to some certain cap. It seems to me that this happens to people really unevenly. There are some neighborhoods that have a lot more of these than others, and some neighbors have to pay a lot more if they're on a corner lot, like you pointed out, or on one side of the street versus the other. And it's that situation where I think the city can do its part to help, at least in the part of the costs, you know, 50/50 or that kind of share seems reasonable, the part of the costs that are for repairing the city street and the sidewalks and the public right-of-way, we don't want to be causing a financial burden for individual homeowners to have to repay the city street when this happens through no fault of their own. I guess I'm interested, Robert, especially hearing in what you've got to say, because I've heard this situation has happened, and there are more sewer problems maybe in your ward than some of these other wards with, you know, with all new homes or something. But I'm generally supportive of option one, and also about the retroactivity, I really think August 1 is a reasonable starting date. This particular last case on Anderson, Mr. Duffett has been working with all of us at Public Works, myself, sending a ledge to the mayor, having meetings, trying to have conversations about how this situation can be handled properly and quickly, and how he can afford to do it without taking out a second mortgage and, you know, selling his car and moving out or something. This is a real financial burden to people, and so we've been trying to figure it out since then. I think that's a reasonable justification for making this retroactive, that one situation, which is still just being completed.
Well, I think my concerns were on the maintenance issue, which is the next subject down, but as it relates to, the circumstance here is basically the same in terms of the circumstances of the inconsistency between neighbors, the distance you have to travel to repair a line. I'll make my comments on the next subject area when we get to it in terms of what I think it really should be.
I agree with Brandon. I think that alternative one is a good option and something we should move ahead with, and retrofit back to August 1 makes sense.
What about the aspect of, that Dennis has raised about, an emergency loan program? Is that something we want to hear from CD on?
Well, based on the fact that it does involve city streets, I think that it should be definitely something that we look into. I mean, I can't, kind of, I wouldn't want to be put in the same situation, told, you've got to fork out $6,000. These people are well-meaning, they bought a home to raise their family in, and unbeknownst to them, they had a problem and obviously didn't have the savings to have a problem that they didn't know about fixed. And so I think that, based on the fact that city streets are involved, that we should look into an emergency no-interest loan fund that could help them out, along with the 50/50 share up to the $4,000.
There's a cost to us, even for, if we did that, wouldn't there be? And I guess I would rather see that money go toward, you know, paying, you know, maybe more than the half or whatever in terms of a loan. I mean, there would be other places for them to get loans, but, you know, I think the most that we can do to optimize the cash outlay that they have to make, the better. And if we're going to spend time and effort, I'd spend time and effort there. Not that the other idea isn't a good one, but I don't know.
Dennis.
Councilwoman, are you suggesting that the ratio be 60% rather than 50% for the cities?
Potentially. I mean, there's a cost, there's a cost to giving no-interest loans. So rather than to have two separate buckets of aid, you know, if we're going to invest in something, make our, just do one and make it more simple.
Yeah, but somebody who can't afford it can't afford it either way. So, I mean, the low-interest loan is probably more doable than, you know, 60% of the payment. I know if I were in that situation, I'd probably choose the low-interest loan myself, because any loan I got from outside would be a lot more expensive.
Mayor?
Well, I think it's in all our interest to get these problems fixed as quickly as possible, so I would like to see a loan program, maybe it has to be gauged to income, but I think we should have something because we want to get the job done quickly.
That's an interesting point. Gauging it to income might be a way to get it going and have our cake and eat it, too. I'd like to hear back from CD on it, so. Is this something we want to have staff proceed and bring back to us with some...
For the next committee?
Ordinance suggestions and whatnot for that. Gail?
As a point of information that I would need to take and put together, an ordinance implementing this, as you see in the recommendation, this will require an adjustment of the sewer benefit tax to be able to fund this particular initiative. And if we're looking at different variations of loans and different percentages, that will affect that number that you bring into the ordinance. I guess, before I can really put an ordinance together, I need some indication of where we would like to end up for that.
I would tend to think in ordinance with some options on some, you know, minor fine tunings, which way to go would probably be in order, but, yeah, I think the mayor has some ideas on how to structure a loan program and where that fits into the city budget, I think, would be between you and, or between staff and the exec, you know, somewhere in the executive department, you guys can figure it out.
Okay.
I think our interest is more in getting something that's workable in three weeks.
So for next committee?
Yeah, three weeks, yeah. Is that a doable time? Maybe?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, so do we need a vote on that, or just, you have enough to go on?
No, I think that's...
Okay. Dennis, did you ask us anything else?
Yeah, I'm not an loan expert, but I know that what the city does sometimes, buy the interest down on a loan in certain programs, and I guess that's how, I mean, we could structure it on, you know, that kind of process. That's already established as a way of providing a...
I think guidance from CD would be important.
Sure, it's true.
We'll look into this, but I think at the end, we'll check out to see what grant money or money's available for community development, if any, don't know. But I think if we're doing a grant and a loan or whatever, I tend to agree for simplicity's sake with Councilmember Barnes, is I'd rather look at just something very clean-cut, and if it's 60%, 50%, 70%, whatever it is, I think they're the easiest for staff to manage because if we have to get into, look into, you know, 1040s and whatever to verify, I think those are invasions of some privacies. I don't know that you want us to get into, but we can. But if we're going to structure it that way, those are just some, again, Public Works typically doesn't get into, it's more of a CD area, but I'll talk to community development. But I think as I sit here without talking to Ron from a stand, comptroller, that is, from a standpoint of loans and tracking and his department sending out, you know, monthly or annual or whatever bills and all that stuff, it just, and it's not on much of them either. It's maybe a couple a year, I realize that, but just, it's one more thing to keep track of. So the easiest thing, and we can come back and talk about this more in three weeks, is it's curcut, we typically watch and work with the homeowner, who the contractors are, get more than one bid, look at it, scrutinize it, you know, use that best competent contractor, do the work. $6,000, 50%, $3,000, pay the invoice. It's pretty straightforward versus, okay, what was your income last year, or the last six years, or whatever. It can be a little bit more complicated, so, but we'll check it out and let you know.
Dennis.
All right. I totally appreciate your comments. I imagine if the homeowner got the loan, those kinds of conversations, it wouldn't actually happen, but they could bring the loan paper from the bank showing what their interest rate is, and it would be very easy for the city to match it, and that would not involve personal divulgations of, you know, income to the city itself, other than, you know, what had to be established in the first place, depending on the program.
Okay, well, we've given staff direction, and I think the mayor and staff can work something out here. So next item is the discussion, very similar, of maintenance of sanitary and storm sewer service laterals. Bill?
Okay, thanks. This particular item of mostly sanitary sewer laterals, but sometimes storm sewer laterals too, breakdown, the memo goes into the details, but there is a higher occurrence of these that happen, you know, throughout any given year. And it could be the, hire a plumber to rot out a sewer line, it might have an accumulation of debris or roots or what have you to something that may be more significant with breakdown of the tile or collapse or things of that sort, where there's, you know, structurally you have to dig up, repair, replace, what have you. And as the memo goes into some details, looking at what other communities do, generally speaking, it's quite common that the responsibility lies for the homeowner between their building, their home, and the public sewer line. There are some exceptions, but that's typically where the responsibilities lie, between the city and a homeowner. We looked at a few alternatives, and I did misspeak earlier, this is where the Line Saver Insurance Program with American Water is available. There were some comments, pros and cons about it already, but that's one option that could be explored or pursued. Another option would be that the more extraordinary costs are, depending where one lives, depending where the public sewer is, depending where the breakdown is, there can be repairs within the right-of-way under the streets that get much more costly than if it's a sewer line in one's, near one's front yard where you're not digging up the street and get into those sorts of details. So the thought was, is more for the extraordinary sewer repairs where they're under payments that the city would look at, helping the burden of that extraordinary cost. I know this is probably going back two years ago, I know Councilmember Lewis had brought this to our attention of some constituent in his neighborhood that had a fairly substantial repair cost, and these do come up from time to time. As far as the numbers, the memo speaks to that. It may occur in any one year, they do fluctuate, it just, there's a lot of unknowns in that respect, but if we wanted to pursue such a program where there would be a cost sharing, we outline and suggest that there would be a reimbursement at the maximum limit of $6,000. And talk about what that cost may be to the, all the sewer benefit taxpayers in the city. Of course, the third alternative, of course, is just to keep the program as is. If there's any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Robert?
I got a couple. I did bring this up a while back, and one of the concerns that, the Ellis subdivision, it's one of the oldest subdivisions in Urbana. And what I found when I looked at the maintenance requirements, it specifically specifies that you have to, you're responsible to the tee, that's on the main. And in this particular situation, I know at a certain portion of this subdivision, the sewer main is at almost 14 feet. It's deep, very deep. And I also found out that what the neighbors had asked of the city was to remove the trees that are between the sidewalk and the street. They felt that that would help the situation because we recognize this is old technology and that roots of the biggest bugaboo of these old systems. But being a city of Urbana and loving trees, they didn't want to remove the trees. But the trees are on the parking. So after I thought about all that, I concluded that if we don't want to remove the trees, but we have to go to the tee, and how can we be, oh, the other aspect was that it went down one side of the street, so in this particular situation, the people on the south side would have to come a little bit beyond the sidewalk to get to the main. This is a branch off of one of the main mains. But the person on the north side of the street would have to burrow all the way under the sidewalk and the street, repair the entire street and sidewalk, and they're on the same tax base. So that's a conflict right there. The neighbor on the south side versus the neighbor on the north, and I don't like that in my, you know, that kind of disparity, so how can I solve that? And I said, the only recommendation I could make would be that the people on the south side be responsible to the right-of-way. I'm talking about one foot inside of the sidewalk on the south side, and the people on the north, one foot on the north side to the sidewalk for them. They have to repair... They have to repair everything there are, they're out north, or they're out south. The stuff that's left in the middle, the trees, the infrastructure, is the city's. And they would make those repairs if that deemed necessary. But these are a few, okay, and then, I don't, I don't, Bill told us how many they are. So I don't think it's a big, major undertaking, but it is a conflict because of how the original contractor laid out the subdivision, and it's a problem with the taxpayers. They recognize that I got to pay $7,000, the other guy across the street only has to pay $500. So it's a big disparity. So we want to have our people happy, and this is a simple solution, you know? Take care of the middle, and they take care of the sides. I mean, that's, that's the way I see it. Comments?
Well, my comment on that, wouldn't that almost be like how we do snow removal? I mean, honestly, don't we take care of the street, and the homeowners take care of the sidewalks, and, I mean, I, I--
Well, it's kind of like--
I mean--
Well, it's, it's part of the city infrastructure.
Right.
The streets, sidewalks are part of city infrastructure, and they're responsible for maintaining them, keeping the levels nice, so people don't trip and fall, all those brilliant things, but what happens underneath there is also their responsibility, in my And if it were a corner lot, you would go up to the sidewalk on your corner, it may be a little longer, because you're on the high pot, I just read it on the other one, so, but again, you're paying the penalty for a corner lot.
The fate.
But you wouldn't have to deal with the street.
Bill, or Gail, or Brad, what's the average amount that an individual homeowner pays into the sewer benefit tax in a year, roughly?
$53 a year is the Urbana portion.
$53? So this would be like a 3% increase?
Now, if you look at the alternates, too, we are not talking about taking over the day-to-day maintenance of anything right of way to right of way. All we're talking about is the extraordinary cost if someone has to dig up a pavement or a sidewalk, that we would participate in that cost. The maintenance of that to the tee would still reside with the homeowner or the alternates that we presented here.
What's your estimate of what this would cost annually?
You got those numbers?
I believe it's $60,000 is what we anticipate for the pavement reimbursement program.
So this is much more expensive than the last thing we were talking about?
Yeah, because we're talking about more laterals. You're talking, the last program was for, we were figuring two laterals per year, I think this one we're--
Ten.
Yeah, we're figuring 10 a year.
I know, I don't know, I understand that, that it's possible for the homeowner to do his own excavation work, maybe not do his own replumbing, but that one doesn't necessarily have to hire out, you know, a backhoe, or, one might be able to save on some of the labor costs by doing your own excavation, and I'm thinking about this because my neighbor did that, as I understand it, he and his son dug the, dug down to the sewer line lateral, all the way to the pavement of the, not the pavement, but to the sidewalk. So that's one place where an industrious homeowner might be able to save some money. But once you get to the sidewalk, and you get into the street, there's no, there's no homeowner who's going to, well, have the right to dig up the street in the first place, and it's just way beyond a person's ability. So the real expenses come when you hit the pavement. We really do, I think, need to have some kind of assistance, it seems fair. I don't really look forward to suggesting that, well, the result, the result is to raise a tax, city tax, $2 a year is going to make a lot of people somewhat upset, because there's only a handful of people who are going to benefit from it annually, so, there's a lot of yin and yang on this one, that's not as quite clear-cut. I'm just making these comments, that's all.
It's not clear-cut.
I'm most comfortable with alternative two, the alternative where we would reimburse, I think I am a little concerned about the cost, this is a program that costs 10 times as much as the last one we discussed, so when it comes forward, maybe for some final action, I think I would consider something like, rather than us paying all 100% share, which I think is what this program is, maybe we could pay a 50% share, up to some cap, like up to $3,000. And I know that still is double what champagne pays, double what they'll help you out with, but I think maybe a cost share or something like that might make some sense, just so at least we could look at the numbers and have some time to hear from people about whether this kind of change, since this is a larger change in the sewer benefit tax, is something that's generally supported or not. But I would basically be in support of asking staff to go forward with, with alternative two, and get ready to have it as an ordinance that we can have some final discussion and action on.
Okay, if we, if we did put a cap on the benefit for these experiences, and if we reduced it from $60,000 to $30,000, it sounds like the only way that we're going to be able to finance a project like this is a change in the sewer tax benefit plan, right? I mean, there'd have to be some financial resource to accommodate our plan, so, you know, so, okay. Bill Gray, you have a comment?
Just, that's what we're recommending.
Right.
The sewer benefit tax, I mean, obviously there's other ways, but that's what we're recommending.
Well, it makes sense, because you're talking about sewers.
Right.
Well, also, in this situation, the one in our, in the neighborhood I live in, the people are, you know, strapped, in most cases, so to fork up significant dollars on a sewer replacement is a pretty difficult task for them, no matter how you cut it. So, I would venture to say, I would like to see, whatever decision we make here, have a public hearing on it, so we can really find out the depth and breadth of this whole thing, and what it really means to the people. And I think when we hear the comments from them, I would be remiss if I did not allow them to say, speak up for themselves, because they are the owners of these properties, and they are the ones that will have to be dealing with this issue.
Well, we made this consistent with the proposal for the illegal connections, and we did it for half, that would only, that would be a dollar a year per property owner, instead of $2.
Mm-hmm.
And we should probably do the same thing, and have a loan program, or maybe a grant for certain people in, you know, certain categories, if they have, like, the senior exemption on the property tax.
And if it deemed necessary, change the language on the maintenance about going to the tee. Going to the tee, if we did make some changes, so that we wouldn't be, in future years, having an issue with this again.
Let me ask a question here to clarify that, though. You know, like, I have to have my sewer line cleaned out every other year or so for roots that are growing along the side of my house, but they go all the way to the street, you know, they might as well clean, you know, the, how are you going to proportion out the costs, you know, they come and, you know, rotor ruder out from my cleanout, out to the street, you know, and eight feet or 10 feet is in the right of way, I mean, there's no real additional cost, they've come to the house, they've started up, and they're going to clean that last eight or 10 feet anyway.
Oh, that's normal.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll see a problem with that.
That, you're not talking about that kind, you're talking about--
The language and the ordinance.
Language and the ordinance, okay, I guess I'm not following exactly. Does staff understand? No, okay.
Well, it says that the homeowner would be responsible for the repairs to the tee.
Correct.
Okay, and if the tee occurs at the main, then that tells the person what they're responsible for. So, when we change the approach, we have to change the language as well. If we change the approach.
If you change the line where the homeowner and the city responsibility is, then you drive up the cost to the city tremendously.
I know.
I mean, much more than $30,000 or $60,000. And the scenario, and that's just one scenario, there's many scenarios that Councilmember Smythe just gave, would be very problematic for us to differentiate then, between some imaginary line, you know, either side of a public sewer main, and whose responsibility, who's going to fix it? Do we go in, does the homeowner's contractor go in? I think it's a whole lot more complicated if we change that line of responsibility, it's very clean right now.
If we have the appropriate equipment, you know exactly where the property lines.
We also have the issue that a lot of our sewers are in back lots, so how do you defend maintaining and the maintenance of the sewer out to the street, but you don't maintain the one to the back lots? And so when you start adding all of that maintenance, it's a lot more staff time, more staff time than we have available, and a lot more cost to the city to do those maintenances.
Do we have in the back of the lot an easement?
We have an easement, but--
Do we know where the easement is?
These costs in this alternate only consider that portion of the sewers that are under the street, and only the extraordinary cost. When you start talking about changing the point of maintenance to the main, to the house, then you start including every sewer in the system for maintenance, and then, so that is just way beyond computing the cost of what that would be to the city.
Also, in this particular discussion about maintenance, I think, I want to, I guess, get a very clear distinction between types of maintenance. I mean, Charlie, you just brought up the point that certainly, in this town, every two or three years, you have, you have line blockage caused by roots invading, you know, the pipes and things like that, and, okay, you call, you have to call a rotor ruder or some maintenance company for the sewers, and they send the, you know, claw-toothed little animal down through the line, and it chews up all the roots, and you clear the line. That's your typical maintenance experience. Now, a different kind of maintenance is when your line collapses, or the, you know, cracks and breaks. Are we, is this ordinance supposed to handle both kinds of maintenance, routine maintenance or extraordinary maintenance? I think it should handle extraordinary maintenance.
The intent is just extraordinary maintenance, and only under pavements, because those are the extraordinary costs.
Right.
That was the intent.
The, what we're proposing in the alternate is only to participate in the extraordinary cost of those maintenance that would require a pavement to be removed. We're not trying to differentiate what kind of maintenance it is, or what level of maintenance, because then you get into a lot of legal arguments, well, my maintenance is this kind of maintenance, and not that kind of maintenance, and you should be paying for this kind and not. So, we're trying to stay away from changing the line of maintenance, or the point of maintenance. All we're saying is that if, in maintaining your system, you have to dig up the street or the sidewalk, we will participate in those extraordinary costs, that's what we're proposing in alternate two.
Okay.
We're not changing the point of maintenance, or the type of maintenance, or defining the maintenance differently.
Because, just to butt in, there's a whole page four is a discussion on different ways you can clean your line, and it's actually disingenuous to the topic that we're talking about. It's interesting, but it's kind of misleading about what we're actually talking about in this process. Okay, thank you.
Lynn?
I'm inclined to agree with staff, and, well, I'm not sure they recommend anything, but alternative two seems pretty reasonable. We're not, right now, affording our citizens any benefit, so they're paying it all. And so this, coupled with the action we just took, is significant improvement in terms of what we're doing for our citizens, and yet it still represents additional taxes, but I think it's a balance.
Well, we're basically generating an insurance policy.
Right.
Yeah, it's an insurance program of sorts.
With additional sewer tax?
Right, yeah.
Yes, right. Right, but I think that seems like a reasonable approach, it's, it's good, you know, I think it's well thought out.
Yeah, so the combined, the combined program is going to cost $2.27 per homeowner, basically.
Right.
Yeah, if we did half, it would be less, but I think that the issue here is, is, you know--
So, in light of that, I'd like to suggest that we ask staff to go back and prepare an ordinance for our review at our next committee meeting, which is three weeks from now, that are along the lines of alternative two.
There's a motion and a second. Moved by Lynn Barnes, and a second by Brandon Bowers-Socks, to direct staff. Bill?
And to clarify, we're talking about 50% of the costs not to exceed $3,000, is that, is that what the motion includes?
So that, oh, yeah, alternative two is--
And not to exceed $6,000?
Is $6,000, but, you want to do $3,000 or $6,000? Staff has $6,000 in there, but the mayor--
Said three. What I would suggest is that we give you a range, so we know what the costs are for various things, and where this money's going to come from, so, that would be the--
So, please consider both.
Okay.
Did you add, add something, Robert?
No more. Thanks.
Okay, Brandon?
I just have one other question. Do both of these programs, as you see them and have written them up, cover both commercial and residential properties, or is this a benefit that's only going to go to residences?
You know, among staff, we've left it purposely undefined, and that's, we're not saying one or the other. It can be residential and non-residential, or it could be one, just residential. So we're not, I, the statistics we give include residential and non-residential.
That's correct.
So, this is, so it could be a commercial breakdown, quite frankly, commercial, let's just use University Avenue as kind of a worst-case scenario, if there's a sewer on a University Avenue, traffic control, et cetera, et cetera, there you could be looking at $20,000 or $30,000 repair for a business, pick a business you want on University Avenue, and it could be, you know, pretty significant. So, those costs could go pretty high, but we didn't specify because we weren't sure of the pleasure of the council, but we can administrate either way, or all, all connections to the city sewers.
I think if you could come with a recommendation, with a little more answers to some of those questions, a little more analysis, and kind of come with a recommendation next time of what you think is best, if, if you have some ideas of the cost, you know, if one business takes advantage of the program, and it is $60,000, because they have to close the University Avenue or something, and that that sinks the whole ship for that year--
They'll get $3,000, so.
Oh, right, okay, right, that is, that's true, is the cap or the same?
Yes, cap.
Okay.
Cap it at $3,000, $6,000, whatever, you know.
Right.
Frankly, I prefer, you know, my own personal feeling is, what's the difference between $1 and $2, if you get, you know, $3,000 versus $6,000, I'd go for the $2 insurance policy, not the dollar.
Okay.
But that's, that's my, my feeling. Any, any other discussion?
Dennis?
I'd like to ask if the, if the sewer tax for businesses is different than residential?
No, I believe it's all based on water usage.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of sending this off to staff?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Next up is a discussion of our website redesign and the RFP. There has been some discussion back and forth via email, Brandon sent some suggestions, I added some suggestions to Brandon's, and I just looked at my email, and Bill, Bill says he's incorporating those, so, all yours, Bill.
Thank you. After our meeting on October 8th, did a transcription, I tried to identify some actionable items, I can kind of go through those, and I'll tie in with the RFP as those come up. Councilman Brandon had a couple of issues, two primary ones, obviously killed the JavaScript on the front page, we went ahead and just ripped that off. Tied to marketing with a new visual look, this will be done with the, through the web design RFP, and in conjunction with the economic development marketing RFP, there-- Their RFP appears to be very close to finished. I saw a draft of it Saturday. Pardon? Okay. So, the key is, is there's some loose language in that, and I think we probably want to tighten that up a little tighter. And I talked to Brandon a little bit ago, and a little more emphasis on possibility that there's a firm that can take care of both pieces of this, and that might, if we can do that, that'd be quite beneficial. Councilmember Robert Lewis, council rules on blogs, did some initial analysis. I closed a couple of items from Minneapolis that was fairly clear, but really didn't get into the true legal pieces of that. So, we're going to continue to review that and try to find some very specific language on the do's and don'ts. The Minneapolis information, it's fairly current, it's in 2006, so obviously they've had some information provided to them. We're going to try to find, like I said, some more definitive information regarding that. Mayor Pressing, the front page talked about what's unique in Urbana. A couple of keys to that, work more closely with the departments to make sure they have a better mechanism to provide us with information timely to put on. The RFP, and thanks to Brandon, some of the information he provided for that. The key is to make sure, and Charlie also, changing the website so that it's easier for departments to put that information on themselves, quicker interaction with that, and that'll cut another layer of contact down, I think shorten the time span between things happen and the ability to get that on. Comment beautiful, once again, go back to the RFP and the economic developments RFP. Councilmember Charlie Smythe, remove the JavaScript, usability testing. We thought we'd look to approach that a couple, three different ways, and obviously, depending on the consultant, what they want to achieve, but I still think, as a normal part of our operation, go back to our staff, for one thing, because they're in-house, we can get at them, we can work with them very quickly and go back and forth, have them go over some of their issues that they feel from a user perspective and the feedback they've had from their departments. The other one is to get into some smaller, quick tests. We can use, I still think the library's a good choice for us, to find random people that are trying to get to certain things. You don't know what, the references from the Nielsen side, what they called the hallway test, was very specific. Grab three guys out of the hallway, sit them down, have them look at it, and see what they think. And the studies have shown statistically, you know, if you're finding a problem immediately, well, then you don't need large testing to confirm that that's a problem. Obviously, it is a problem. So, it shortens the timeframe and allows us to work through specific areas and kind of break the website into pieces as we make changes, immediately test on that, get some good feedback. And I think that will allow us to also deal with the consultant a little better and give us a better sense of where things are going and how our users are looking at it. Charlie's point on cross-platform, we're taking a couple PCs, we're just going to load up a bunch of browsers. The two, interestingly enough, right now, IE is holding about fifty-seven percent. Firefox is now up to thirty-five percent on a more nationwide usage level. Everybody else is around two percent. But nonetheless, we hit those two keys, and there's nothing, no reason not to already load up a couple of the other ones, just to run those by. Danielle, back to the RFP issue, I think with the help of Charlie and Brandon, I think we've got a clear RFP that we're going to tie together. The nice part is, is it's fairly concise. I've looked at a lot of our pages, and I ran from one page to sixty pages, and the sixty pages just tied the hands of the consultant. You just told them everything, exactly how they're going to do it, so why have them do it? And I think this should be fairly clear. Need final ordinances online and don't have final past ordinances. Classic example, we have a number of signed ordinances online, but one of the interfaces is horribly slow, so you can't find them anyway. They'll come up. If you come up through the agenda side, they're very quick, but you'd have to know to come from that direction. We put a scanning station in the city clerk's office, we've got some more training to go through, but that should allow us to get these on immediately. So, they'll be current, they'll be timely. We're going to rewrite the interface, deal with the issues of also making sure that names, it's driven by names also, which is not difficult to do, but we'll tie that together, and I think that'll improve the speed and the finability. Danielle's comment on downloading the agenda with PDF, actually, we changed that a long time ago, but I think this is the, if the tree falls in the forest and no one hears it, did it make a sound? Well, if we make changes but don't adequately train everybody and get them up to speed, did we effectively make a change? So, this is a training issue as much as anything else as to what's available and how it works, and if we have to cut another layer out of it. It runs from the front page now, but nonetheless, if people can't find it, it's still not, it's still not doing the job. That is fast, and the ordinances, it pulls us fast, and that is actually a webpage. The issue is, in a couple of weeks, they have a work plan with an RFP, and I think we've got that done. I think we're in good shape and moving forward on that. Councilmember Roberts, once again, the issue of getting lost in all the minutia, so we've talked about that, and a primary issue will be resolving the ordinances first. That's a key item. It's something we could focus on very specifically, and with the help of the city clerk on the past ordinances, I think we can improve that dramatically pretty easily. That's that piece. We do have the RFP, which I, did you send your changes out to everybody also? Pardon?
I think I only replied to the people who you and Ron had maybe sent the original RFP to, so I don't believe that was everybody.
I think revised one with whatever joining with, I'm trying to bring up the marketing one from, or from community development, and it's not coming up on my machine here for some reason, so something happened to it. But I think that getting a joint presentation on the two of them together in three weeks, sort of like the final versions, I assume we'll make comments on community development's piece here, and you and Libby should be working together to make sure that whatever overlap there is, is handled appropriately in the RFPs, and then we get to finalize them, right? So, do we do final approval of RFPs in the situation?
I don't think so. I think if it's already budgeted, the staff can, you know, can handle the situation.
Are both, is everything budgeted for these two things?
No, I'm not sure I can answer that until I get an idea of what it's going to cost for this consultant. If it's a small amount, then I think we will be able to cover that within our budget of computer services. If it's a larger amount, probably won't be able to do that and have to come back. And they do have money for their marketing one and economic development. The question on the RFP, we can bring the RFP back if you feel you want to, you know, look at or review it, but I would suggest that we've got the RFP, we've got the changes, suggestions, and I would, you know, I'd hate to see it be delayed any longer. I'd like to get it out, get it going.
My concern is that we carefully handle the overlap with CDs. You know, I trust the mayor and staff to deal with that, but I would like to look at CDs and make some comments on it before both of these go out.
Oh, sure.
That's basically what I'm saying.
The CD one is much larger, more comprehensive, and has a lot more involved than just the webpage. It's really marketing the city in all the different stages and facets. So, you know, if possible, I would like to try to move with ours without, I'm afraid if we hold it up for that one, it's going to take longer than you're going to be satisfied with.
Okay, well, I just need to, I just need to be able to look at CDs, and I can, I can quickly see where the issues are, and, you know, so if I can just have a few days with a workable version of CDs, I'll be happy.
Of course.
I see that. Yeah. Okay, so, let them go? Go to it?
Yeah, I heard a few people who said they'd like to get a copy. So, if you all have a version and want to send it out to council members, maybe through email, that'd give us a chance to respond, but it sounds like maybe we don't need to wait for a big presentation in three weeks.
I expect to make these changes and get these back out to council. I mean, there's just no, there's no reason you don't have, you don't see this, and by that period of time, a little bit of feedback, you know, I mean, let these things settle in, get a little bit of feedback. There's no downsides with that. I looked at Libby's a little bit Saturday. We haven't really, now that we've got these extra items in here, you know, just talked to her a little bit about how she wants to tie this together, but from Ron's perspective, being able to move ahead on part of this, but making sure this clearly defines that it has to interlap, and there must be a mechanism by which those things dovetail together, is a key piece for both consultants to provide. I think we can put that language in place pretty easily.
Yeah, so, seeing that, about one more round of comments and then it goes? Yeah, great. So, you should be able to get this off your desk by Monday, if not sooner? Think so?
I do so.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Bill. I guess the next item is something I, oh, mayor?
You're not talking about it coming to the council?
No, 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 just that, you know, one more round of comments from us and off it goes. The last item on the agenda is update, well, Bill was here, I wanted to get update on cable stuff, and the library board passed a budget item asking for a fiber connection between the library and the city building. There are multiple reasons for that, but most of the library is, has maxed out its current connection and needs to go to something, basically needs to go to a wider pipe. The best pipe is a fiber connection, which also, which would also tie us into the television system in this building. So, the library board has approved a budget item for this year for eighteen thousand to establish a fiber connection between the library and here, and I was waiting to hear from Bill on the various pieces, because it also ties into cable.
Yeah, and let me, I'll start with the library issue. As Charlie mentioned, completing the library extension allows us to push and pull UPTV information literally from the library, so they can do live presentations, a number of things. They have an excellent facility, and part of that was built in the hopes of doing that. Matter of fact, one of the expectations is, potentially, when we retire these cameras, these go to the library and get mounted in that area. They're fully controllable, they are, they have some age to them, and the controls are a bit cantankerous, but nonetheless, they're outstanding cameras for the situation. That and their bandwidth, they're buried both from a user side and from, just from a staff perspective. If you've tried to check out books there periodically, the wait is quite lengthy because of the online access. Using that, the fiber connection, the other piece of this is, as you know, we have a long fiber loop involved from the county courthouse to here, to our public works, on out to Brookins, and then from Brookins County has another piece of fiber on out to Metcalf. We have looked at, and this should hopefully keep our costs down, but some time back, the county had run a fiber connection to Lincoln Square when they were doing remote judicial procedures, proceedings at Lincoln Square. Well, our hope is to tap that T-line, so instead of having to do another run clear from one of the junctions on the far side of the courthouse, we'll actually hopefully hit that T, which is right and very near the old post office area, as it already crosses the street, and then be able to shoot along the right-of-way and go straight to the library, which saves us quite a bit of money and quite a bit of feet of running. And this also is just a normal extension. We've already got ingress into the county building from that unit, so we don't have to do another penetrate. There's a lot of positives from this, and county's been really easy to work with on getting this established. We've got to calculate a depth issue, just similar to the sewer issue, we've got to figure out exactly how deep we've got to go to tap this. But the run looks to be fairly simple. The ingress into the library building already exists, so all we've got to do is get to the south side of there, and we have a way in, and we're very familiar with how it runs within the building itself.
I guess the bottom line is, how soon?
Well, I split the, I'm splitting the RFP into two pieces to make sure we can get it done. Instead of having one company basically do the boring and pull the fiber, I could find a number of companies that can just bore. So, I'm going to pull, do the boring separately, so we can just get it done before it freezes. So, that's the name of the game, is just get a two-inch pipe in the ground. We're also doing some short-term connectivity with VoLo to provide higher bandwidth to the library, and for the city, we've got the same issues here. And we're also doing that with the county, and the short-term point-to-point wireless gives us a couple, because the county's doing the same thing, they have the same bandwidth issues. We've got, that allows us to build a little more of a, part of a loop in effect, so if we get a fiber cut in one spot, we can go backwards through the loop and still get, and maintain our connectivity. When we go to fiber, total fiber at the library, eventually, we'll pull that unit off, swing that to another location, and expand the loop in another direction. So, possibly, so once again, we won't, we have no lost money on the hardware, we'll just use it to reach in another area. The reason, I'm sorry. The other issue, part of this RFP is, we're also giving you an estimated cost to run fiber extended from the library all the way down to approximately Lincoln and Green. There's two different locations close to there. There's McLeod location, which has quite a bit of fiber in the ground, and there's also a University of Illinois location, which obviously has quite a bit of fiber in the ground. If we use McLeod, basically, it involves leasing, leasing the fiber, once we get to transport our fiber, our connection to another location being ICN, Illinois Century Network, which provides most of the internet access, data transfer for, you know, schools, libraries, governments. If we get to the U of I, that would also help them in providing faster communications for university police. It has a record system that resides here along with the city of Champaign and the city of Urbana. The Jazz Consortium at Brookins handles all of the mapping. That would improve their connectivity to there, and it also improved their connectivity to Metcalf. That would convert all of that to fiber, so those are real benefits for the university if we're connected to the university. Also, whatever relationship we establish would no doubt be a lower fees than having to rent space through McLeod. There's a third party that's looking at pulling a lot of fiber together in town and then sublease, backleasing that to whoever might want to do that, similar to McLeod, but they're looking at it from a bigger loop perspective, so they're looking at where that might benefit City of Champaign, some other vendors, a number of governmental units to make it worthwhile. That would create some loop redundancy, but once again, dependency on an outside vendor. But it'd be a more managed fiber loop. I mean, that's the biggest worry about fiber right now, is the cost to get somewhere is somewhat prohibitive, so you tend to only go with one line, one place, that's cut, and everything on the other side is gone. So, those are pretty big issues. County, Urbana, we both have inside fiber connections to our buildings through UPTV. There's excess fiber. During prior negotiations, the cost of the extra fiber access was cost prohibitive. Pending change over to Comcast, situation's a little more fluid, these costs could change dramatically, and that might be a very simple way for short-term to tap that. You know, I, you know, from most everybody's perspective, wireless, and point-to-point wireless does outstanding work, is a great last-mile technique, but for a lot of the entities we run, you know, fiber's still king for, you know, I mean, and we, because we can bury it deep.
Where, thanks for that part, where are we on the actual cable negotiations? Where's that? Oh, Ron?
Thank you. First, let me say that Brian Grogan, our consultant, who works with Moss and Burnett, a firm out of Minneapolis, is scheduled to come before the council on December tenth and give the council a recommendation. His report is finalized, well, I should say it is completely written, but we are finalizing things recently. Bill, Dejournette, myself, some people from Champaign met, what was last week, I believe, Bill? Yeah, last week that we met to go over some issues that, information that we felt may be lacking, or things that we wanted further explained by the consultants. So, I don't want to get in too far in-depth into that, because he is better versed in his own findings, as well as what report. As far as the negotiations go, there really aren't any negotiations taking place at this moment, because we've been kind of waiting for our consultants to finish their work. However, preliminarily, there have been three audits that have taken place that have been completed. There was a technical audit, a customer service audit, and a financial audit. There was a technical audit, a customer service audit, and a, a financial audit. Financially speaking, and again, I'm just giving you preliminary information, they found that actually Urbana had underpaid Insight for a few years because of some, they weren't, I don't want to call them accounting irregularities, they were not irregularities. What it was, was just that there were some numbers that were mixed in that caused us to get fees that we should not have gotten. So, I shouldn't say that we underpaid, we were overpaid. So, that money has already been taken care of. Insight withheld certain fees that would normally come to us for a period of time, so that, that number is at zero. The second thing is technical audits that were done. They looked at the plant, they looked at public safety from the standpoint of how Insight had done installs in public right-of-way, and they also looked at grounding issues. There was a sampling taken of, I believe it was, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, it's 11 properties, 11 or 12 properties. They found that there were problems with maybe three of those 11 properties. I don't know what conclusions that one can draw from a sampling so small. Champaign had, I believe, nine out of their 12 had some grounding issues, but again, it's a very small sample, and statistically, I don't know how many, how much, how many conclusions you could draw from that, what inferences you might be able to reasonably draw with, draw. So that's financial, technical. Customer service, we were doing very well. In the customer service reports, they found that there was a high level of satisfaction. What occurred was, we used a company, research was done by a company called E-Track, and they actually made phone calls to over 300 households in Urbana to ask certain questions about their service. 310, to be exact, a random sample of Insight Communications subscribers, and it found that most Insight Communications subscribers in Urbana are satisfied with their cable service, and then they broke it out into a number of different questions. I don't want to bore you with that right now. But suffice it to say, we're moving along now in terms of our due diligence and gathering our information as we go forward in beginning to, in earnest, negotiate with, now it will be Comcast, because obviously they, they are taking over. The transfer issue is done. We're just waiting to get back our signed acceptance and agreement form from Comcast, saying that they accept our resolution that I previously brought before you.
I can tell you quickly that sample size, the sample size, when you're talking about 12 out of, you've got nine plus three divided by, you know...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, roughly. You've got about 50% error there, and the maximum error rate's going to be .25 divided by N, in this case is 24, so your, your sampling is probably plus or minus .1.
I'm a lawyer.
So, yeah, well, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that when you have a 50, when you have a 50% error rate at those rates, you're sampling here, it's about plus or minus .1 on that. So that's, you know, between 40 and 60% here. That's not good, okay? If they're, if they're having that much, that much of a problem.
Well, it'll, and again, I'll leave it to Brian Grogan, because it was his team that, part of his team that went out and actually did the, the audits, and he could probably speak to what recommendations or inferences that should reasonably be drawn from, from that sampling size. And but, not, and I'm not disputing you, I'm just saying, I can't go any further in my analysis of it until Brian presents his report.
Yeah. Other questions for Ron or Bill? Is everybody happy? Okay, anything else on the agenda? Seeing no further business, we're adjourned. Thank you.